I want to welcome everyone to the February 21st, 2024 meeting of the Murphysboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present today. We did not have any public comments registered. Thank you. First item of business is to approve the minutes of the February 7th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Anybody have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
And then we have the consent agenda. And again, everyone's had the chance to review all these. Did anybody have any items they would like to have removed for further discussion or any changes? And if not, again, we'll be ready for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay, next we'll be moving on to our GDO items. The first item there is Mark Pirtle Lot 3. This is Homewood Suites. It's final design review and site plan review of an 84,154 square foot hotel on 3.6 acres, zoned MU and GDO 3, located along Gateway Boulevard. Gateway Hotel Partners LLC is the developer. And Mr. Blomley, you're going to present for us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. And so Ms. Green had a number of items on the agenda for this month, and she did all the work on them, got them loaded, and we published them. And so we are pleased to announce that she has been appointed to a new position in our IT department to oversee our, to help oversee and manage the implementation of our CityWorks program. So CityWorks being the software that we are implementing. So I will, I will handle these next two presentations, and then Mr. Brad Barbie will handle the next three presentations after that.
And if I could just go ahead and say real quick, for those of you who know Margaret Ann, 18, 19 years in the planning department?
19 years in the planning department.
And so I got to work with her through all of those years, and she has done an excellent job, kept us all on our toes and moving in the right direction. And we just appreciate everything she did for us, and I'm excited for her and her new opportunity. And no, she'll do well with that.
Absolutely. I was on the other side of the wall from her office for 19 of my 22 years with the city. And it was a pleasure to work with her those 19 years. And we are very happy that she is, that we are able to continue to utilize her talents here with our organization and know that she will be a great asset in her new, in her new position. And we certainly are appreciative of all the hard work and knowledge and efforts that she brought to her position over the last 19 years and to the city and our department as well. She made vast contributions, and she will be missed. But we're so happy that she's, with the work that she is going to be doing in her new position.
Yep. Congratulations to her.
Absolutely. So I'll try to do her justice in these next two presentations because she knows a lot more about these than I do. But these are two items in the Gateway Design Overlay District. The first one of which is a new five-story hotel that is located along the south side of Gateway Boulevard. It backs up directly to the west fork of the Stones River. It's the parcel on the map that has the 1412 address point on it. And this is a proposed Homewood Suites. This is a lot in the Mark Pirtle subdivision, located to the south of Medical Center Parkway. You saw this item on your agenda in January for initial design review. It passed initial design review. The plans are in, are in good order. There are relatively few comments remaining. We'll be happy to go over any aspect of the civil plans or the, the architecture, if you so wish. We'll be also happy to answer any questions that you may have. Don't believe there have been any major changes since initial design review to the, to the plans. I'd like to invite the applicants to come up and be available to answer any questions that, that the Planning Commission may have. As I mentioned, it's a five-story Homewood Suites hotel. Yes, if the applicants could come up to the podium. Here are the elevations. Be happy to answer any questions, and we would ask that any approval be made, subject to all staff comments.
Okay, so as far as, you know, they addressed any issues from the initial design review? And we have all that?
I've reviewed Ms. Green's staff report and the comments, and there are very, very few staff comments remaining. Gentlemen, is there anything that you would like to add? Any, any changes that have occurred since initial design review?
We essentially have responded to all of the staff comments and did send that back to Margaret Ann Green. I'm happy to share that with you if you would like. Every one of them has been addressed, or staff comments were that they needed to be addressed before permit, and they, all of those items are underway to being addressed.
Perfect. We appreciate you confirming that. I'm sure Ms. Green wouldn't have let them be right here on our agenda if that hadn't happened, but.
Yeah, she's been a great help. So, yeah.
All right. Any other, any questions from anybody? Comments? Looks like, looks nice.
If there are none, I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is the Parkway Office Park Lot 14, Mental Health Cooperative. It's a final design review and site plan review of a 15,211 square foot medical office building on 1.8 acres, zoned CH, LI, and GDO 3, located along Gateway Boulevard and Carl Adams Drive. Holiday Properties is the developer. And Mr. Blomley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is for a vacant lot fronting on Gateway Boulevard on the north side of Medical Center Parkway, just to the north of the hospital. It backs up to Carl Adams Drive, which is a private drive in the Parkway Office Park subdivision. The proposed development is a one-story medical office building specializing in behavioral health and addiction treatment. There will be, Mental Health Cooperative is the, the primary tenant, but there will be additional tenant spaces, and the tenants for those will be identified in the future, but are believed to be primarily behavioral health-related as well, if I'm not mistaken. And the, much like the last application, there are very few outstanding comments. I think Ms. Green probably did a great job with this one, too, getting the plans in good shape before you, before you saw it for final design review. Believe the design of the building and the site are largely the same as what was presented in January. The design team is at the podium, if you have any questions for them. And if y'all could identify any, any possible changes that I may, that I may have missed in my presentation that need to be identified for the Planning Commission.
No, Matt, I'm Jeff Iment Holiday. The only thing I would add is the additional tenant that's referenced in there would be where they would bring youth services in, and that would actually be a joint venture of the services, not actually an independent tenant of Mental Health Cooperative. It's more like a joint venture with a practice group.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Of course, we have, we have the elevations and the, and the plan, if the Planning Commission would like to look at, at those again. This was approved on initial design review last month.
All right, looks good. If there's any questions or comments from the Planning Commission?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item, looks like we've got three items in Clary Park. Our first one is Clary Park Lot 12, Neighbors. It's the initial design review of a 4,182 square foot restaurant on 1.5 acres, zoned CH, PUD, and GDO 1, located along Robbie Corlou Lane, Neighbors developer. And Mr. Barbie, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the Murphysboro Planning Commission. The next item on your agenda is Neighbors Restaurant, and I am trying to find the file. Yep. Here we go. Apologize, it's for 4,182 square foot restaurant located in the Clary Park Development as Lot, Lot 12. And site plan is generally in good order. As you can see, it's located north of the avenue on the property. Right, that doesn't look right, because that's Carl Adams. I think I did, too. All right, now we're getting to the actual staff report. It's located Clary Park Development, on this corner lot here, that is north of the avenue, along the shared Honey Locust Lane. Reviewing Ms. Green's staff report, in general, it is in good order. Their design team is with us here today, and I believe they have a presentation to go along with it.
Thank you, Brad. I'm Matt Taylor. Excited to bring Neighbors' site plan to you. I've got the architect, Mr. Will Jenner, with me as well. So Neighbors is very local to Nashville market in itself. They've got three stores that are open currently, Sylvan Park, Germantown, and Franklin. They've got another one coming in the Gulch. They like to describe themselves as the neighborhood sports entertainment bar, but they don't describe themselves as bar food. It's darn good food, to edit a little bit of their marketing lingo there. So as Brad said, it is at the entrance off of Honey Locust, right behind Firebirds. This is going back, it's directly across the street from Drake's, so it's kind of that grand lawn concept that y'all had reviewed within the last couple of months. We've also got our own outdoor space on that entrance as well. So I think all of their concepts have the outdoor space, trying to get people to go out and play cornhole, or just kind of have a leisure time while they're watching their favorite ballgame. So as far as the site plan itself, we've got an access back onto Robbie Corlou. So we've got an access onto Robbie Corlou here. Of course, Robbie Corlou has that linear park that is, was part of the Clary Park PUD. And then we've also got an access point back into the apartment site plan located there that'll have that ground floor office space constructed with the apartments. Our outdoor space will be concentrated on really three sides of the building here, shown here in the blue. So we have outdoor patio, as well as some outdoor space for our guests and visitors. Our trash and solid waste are going to be integrated into the building design located there, so they don't stick out toward any of the three streets that we have. And then, as you can see, our building is pulled up to the corner, so we're highlighting the building and not the parking. The parking is located to the side and rear, all the way around the building. We've got good pedestrian linkage back both to Robbie Corlou, as well as that entrance back to the multifamily right here as well. As far as architecture goes, we do have some nice 3D renderings shown there, but I will start with this, this top elevation here is what will face the road that goes back to the multifamily. And then the bottom will face Robbie Corlou. And then, as you scroll down, the top will face back toward the multifamily, and then the bottom will face toward the, our parking lot. We did make a very recent change as of this morning, and so it's not inside this PUD package, or inside this package. We've got some hard copies, if you'd like to see it. Essentially, we replaced the base of building with an additional brick instead of Nietzsche Ha, and so we did that on, on all the sides. So we found a brick that really went with our colors well, so we'll want to bring that back. You'll have that inside your package at the final design review, but did want to make you aware that that change is outstanding there.
So same, same color, basically?
Generally, it's a very similar color in nature. Yeah, we just.
It's a little lighter than the darker one, so there is contrast between that cap.
Pass around the, the parking. Thank you.
We basically use the darker one as the cap and base, and the lighter one as.
If you could go to the microphone, so it'll pick it up for the minutes?
Yes, we basically use the darker one that's on the board for the base, and then the lighter one would be the infill, which you see as BR1, on the one he just passed out, which would be a little bit lighter of a brick. And then BR2 would be the darker one that's on the, the material board currently.
You, you go on if there was.
I think I'd said everything I, I wanted to. So we're happy to answer any questions that you've got.
So the bottom's still going to be brick?
Yes. It was Nietzsche Ha on what's in this package. We're changing it to brick.
To the BR1?
To the BR2, I think, is the way it's labeled on that handout, right?
That's not on our materials board.
Correct. It's this.
Yeah, we've.
I see. It is different. Okay.
It is, yes. We, yes.
Okay, so this is initial design review. Any specific questions or any direction, if you'd like to see different before it comes back for final design review?
Have we taken issue in the recent past about a lot of glass on the outside of these restaurants? Does anyone else remember that conversation? Or was that at council?
I think our requirements actually requires a certain amount of glass. I think the issue has been if the glass goes all the way to the ground for wide, wide expanses.
I see, okay.
We do have a minimum amount of what the design guidelines calls void space, which that, that.
Right.
So help me, is the, what's the rear? What's it facing? So what we're calling the rear of the building, it faces the parking lot. So.
Behind that is the townhomes?
It's the.
I'm looking at the site view.
No. So we're here, and so the rear is facing this direction. So this is an undeveloped, to the east is an undeveloped lot today. And so that is, I think it's Lot 18, if I remember my numbers right. And that is, today it's reserved for office for a set number of years. After that, it can convert to townhomes, if so be, if we've not found that office tenant. But that is probably, from a distance perspective, you're, we've got 14, 15, 16, 17. You're 200, 250 feet away from that property line, I would say there, approximately, from the building to where that office or townhomes would be in the future. I mean, my only comment would be, if this was facing and it didn't have the distance that you just mentioned, depending on what it was facing, I'm not sure we would go with this, this very plane on the back, but that's an opinion. And I think, you know, as long as it's, if it's 250 feet away, I don't know, it just, there's nothing to it.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think y'all are trying to prioritize the view shed to the, to Robbie Corlou Lane, to the entrance to the apartments, and to the apartments themselves, to create kind of a, a relationship between those two buildings.
Yeah, and it's one of, it's one of those, like a lot of Clary Park, this one may be a little more, because it's got the three, it's got two roads, plus the apartments direct on the backside. We do have pilasters, they probably, they probably don't show up very well, some vertical elements that we're trying to integrate there. Mr. Halliburton?
Meaning they protrude out?
Those are, yes. What is that protrusion? Do you know, Will?
Right now, it's just like eight inches.
Okay.
Something like that. Tried to break it up a little bit, but that's basically all that.
I see it now. Okay.
I mean, it's basically, we have our HVAC screening back there.
Right.
Kitchen equipment, so it's hard to put windows or anything back there.
Okay.
Kitchen hoods and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
What about landscaping around it? Would that help? Because I, I see what he's saying on the last page of the handout that you gave, Matt.
We do have a lot of landscaping there.
Views 3 and 4.
I don't know. Let me see if we've got a landscape.
It's, it's in there.
There we go. And so, yeah, so.
What page is that on the PUD vote?
It is, I don't know on the ta, on your tablet, it's Sheet L1.0.
It's of the PDF, Ms. Ava Water, it's page 122.
That's what I'm hearing.
Quite a bit of landscape.
Okay. And so we've got, of course, you've got your normal trees in the landscape island, but then also along this particular wall, you've got. See if I can read. Let's see. You've got some Japanese hollies back there. Also got some, several versions of Japanese hollies, I think some Carissa hollies through there. We could make sure that we also, make sure that something through there has some verticality to it. I don't pretend to be a landscape architect, but I know those are a little shorter. So we could get something that has some verticality through there as well, before we come back on final design review.
But that landscape you're talking about, Matt, is that around the parking lot, or actually a, like, up against the building?
If you can see, it's up against the building. Of course, as you come out in the parking lot, you do have trees out there that will help just block the view generally.
Okay.
But against the building, I think they, I'm sure they can come up with a few items that provide some more vertical elements there, against the building.
That'd look good.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second. Thank you.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item, item D, is for Clary Park Lot 15, Bueno Beef. It's initial design review of a 4,706 square foot drive-through restaurant on 1.5 acres, zoned CH and GDO 1, located along Willow Oak Trail and Robbie Corlou Lane, Bueno Venture 1 developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon again, Chair Jones. As you mentioned, the next application you have before you today is for Bueno Beef. This is another Clary Park Lot 15 location. This one is located to the far western end of the Clary Park Development. And let's see if we can get site plan here. Okay, the property we were just looking at was Neighbors, here in Lot 12. Lot 15 is at the far western end of Robbie, Robbie Corlou Lane, the intersection of Willow Oak. I think that's Willow Oak. This restaurant is a, proposed to be a, more of a quicker service. It does have a drive-through. The drive-through itself has got 18 stacking spaces inside the, the drive-through to help manage that drive-through traffic. Our ordinance does require 10, they have provided 18 instead. The plan is generally in good order. I believe they also have a presentation that goes along with this file. Matt?
Matt Taylor from SEC. I've got a couple of representatives from the applicant here as well. Bueno Beef is new to Tennessee. They have been north of here for the most part, but this would be the first location in Tennessee. It's an Italian beef selection. It's got rigatoni, got some burger options. It's also flanked in here by an ice cream shop. They kind of go hand in hand between the two uses. So as Mr. Barbie said, this is located at the intersection of Willow Oak and Robbie Corlou, so that northeast corner there. The 711, I think, is on that corner, and then Water Burger is on the diagonal corner from us here. So we've got one access on to Robbie Corlou. We're actually sharing that with the hotel that's going to the east over here. And then we've got a access point on to Willow Oak, which will also be a shared access point for future development to the north. As Mr. Barbie said, we do have a drive-through with these queueing lanes around this way. We show 18 cars in there. I would estimate that you'd be closer to 22 to 25 cars before it got back to Robbie Corlou, if there was ever such an instance. We've also planned for, I think it's three waiting times, similar, if you've been to Culvers, they have those queue spaces up in front of theirs, in case it's a little longer lead time because of the, what your order is. We've set aside three of those to kind of get people out of that queue line and keep that moving quicker. From an architecture standpoint.
And Mr. Taylor, that additional PDF that you sent is also under one of the other tabs, in case you need it.
Sure. So this probably does a little better job showing the two entrances to the, to kind of different businesses. So this, this area right in here would be for the ice cream, and then this would be the entrance for the beef. And then, those are some pictures of kind of what it would, their normal store would look like. We've also got site-specific elevations on this. I'll zoom in a little bit. So we've got a lot of brick, and also have highlighted our entrances by raising that parapet, as well as changing the materials, changed the materials at the entrance to Bueno Beef, and then raising that parapet for the entrance to the ice cream portion of this project. We do have multiple colors of brick, so we've got approximately four different brick colors. I think you do have a material. I think you do have a material board that you're passing around there as well. And then really, these exhibits were just to show what's real-life pictures of what a standard building would look like. I think, I think this is a little different material. I think we've replaced most of this over here with brick to comply with Clary Park and the GDO guidelines there.
So Matthew, how does the whole ice cream cone thing come into play? I mean, is that considered a sign?
So glad you asked.
I don't remember. I know we've had that conversation, but I don't remember the outcome of that. I honestly try to stay away from signage. I always tell everybody, you basically got to be an attorney to interpret that. And so I think this one over the door would clearly be a sign. This one here, I'm not positive about at all, Mr. Halliburton.
And Mr. Halliburton, I would mention that, that nothing that you are approving at planning commission is with respect to signage on any of these plans. So the signage that are on these plans are for illustrative purposes only, and any signage that they propose will still have to comply with our sign ordinance. And Ms. Stevens in Building Codes will make sure that any signage they propose is, but I think Mr. Taylor's aware of that and knows that anything that's represented on the plans that he's submitting from a signage standpoint is not getting any vested approvals by the planning, by the planning commission's action.
But I think Ken's question still stands. Is the ice cream cone a sign or is it part of the building? Because the horse wasn't a sign.
Can we get a cow?
I'm murdering.
I don't know that I have an answer to that question.
I think that matters, right? Ken, you're kind of where I'm at, right?
I mean, it's kind of like, you know, I relate it to my childhood and Shoney's big boy out there, you know, I'd say that's a sign. But I think everybody here needs to understand what it is.
Mm-hmm.
Understood.
I think we, I can reach out to Ms. Stevens between now and final design, if you're okay with that, and get a very clear definitive answer. Try not to pontificate on what's a sign or what's not. I'd be wrong more than I'm right, I think.
Because I, I just could see a proliferation of, of something similar to that depending on the business that's trying to promote themselves.
Because I think the one to the left, if you're looking on the illustration on the screen, the one to the left looks like a sign.
Talking about this?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I think that is clearly a sign. It's this part that I, I don't know how that is classified, if that's architecture or if that's signage.
Right.
So I think we can, we'll get an answer for you before we're back.
Architectural enhancement.
The north side is the side that faces the detention pond, Matt? Is that right?
Uh, the detention ponds, let me go to the master plan.
Because the north side is where the drive-through ends, correct? My computer is, is running slow today, I'm having a hard time flipping through.
So here, here is our site.
Right.
The detention pond is there, and so.
Oh.
Lot 16 today, I think, allows townhomes and maybe some detached. I know townhomes for certain. I don't recall if there's any detached in the plan there, but it's residential by nature today. There has been no site plan for that proposed, it's just part of the PUD.
Well, yeah, if that north side elevation is sitting that close to future residences, then, because the rendering of the north elevation is, is pretty sparse.
Well, that affects the whole drive-through thing too, does it not? And how far the box is from residential property line?
I agree, the squat box sits back a little bit more, but the window.
And we did, we talked with, at length with staff about the drive-through versus the residential and with the, the PUD uses. It is, it's an allowed use, so there is no, there was no separation requirement for that particular use. I think I'm getting there.
But Chair Jones is right, there's one for the speaker box, right?
A separation, a separation requirement?
Yes.
Uh, no, that is only in the CF zone.
So that would be, the, the north view, this is what would face that direction.
The houses.
Yes, ma'am. And we do have a landscape buffer along that side. I think it's a 15-foot type D, if I recall my types correctly. So there's a lot of landscaping between here and there.
But this is going to be built a lot sooner than the townhouses are, so nobody's buying a townhouse and then all of a sudden a squat box is there.
It may be a single-family, it may not be a townhouse.
No, it's townhouses.
It could be SF or townhouse, right, Matt?
It's like 188 townhomes in it.
Um, there's 60, 65.
But on that specific corner, it can go single-family or townhouse, right?
I think that we have all townhomes, is that right, Walt? Is it all townhomes on the PUD right now?
I think there was some single-family along Willow Oak.
Along Willow Oak. So there's some detached, along Willow Oak. That kind of fronts that. And this has some horizontal building plane working in and out, like this portion right here sets out from this, and then there's another break at those two, approximately those two blue lines right there. So it's not a complete flat wall through there. It just, it's hard to see in the 2D. If you look at the site plan, you can start to see where those building breaks are, though.
Does the drive-through serve both restaurants?
Hi, Tim Hague from Keystone Planning and Design. They do serve some ice cream products through the drive-through. We presently don't serve the cone through the drive-through, but we do serve the shakes and the cakes.
Rigatoni, but no cone.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I'm struggling with the elevation on the north side if it's going to be close to any residential, particularly Clary Park and the GDO. At a minimum, I think it needs some vertical landscaping up against the building to conceal some of the brick, but I'm not even sure that's, I'm wondering if there's a way to, for lack of a better word, scoot the building southern and maybe move some parking, I'm not sure, just to give it some more distance from that property line? So someone sitting on their back, depending on how the, and I mean, we don't know how the townhomes exactly might be laid out, it could change.
So if you, we know that that is going to be a shared access point right there, so we're pushing that against. And what I'd say again is, there's not, because of the drive-through, there's not going to be room to, I mean, you can see, there's not, there's not enough room to do landscaping beside the building. But directly on the opposite side of that drive, there is an abundance of landscaping that has ever, that is heavy on evergreens. It also has shade trees for the verticality in there as well, so, and it is directly on the other side of this drive here, Ms. Everwater. So you can see all of that through there.
Still on this property, but just on the other side of the drive-through lane? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am. It's still our property.
That's where the 15-foot buffer with all the heavy landscaping is.
Yes, ma'am. And that'll still be, it'll be my client's responsibility to maintain and that in perpetuity.
And, and one of the things that you do have your, at your disposal, if you, if you think it would be beneficial to supplement that buffer with a, with a fence, that's a, that's a possibility as well.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
Do your blue thing where the box, where they're going to order from? Because I can't figure that out.
It is there and there.
Okay. So it is on that side?
Yes, sir.
That one on top is close.
I'd say it's, you know, 30-ish, 35 feet.
And I, I know what you're saying, Sean. It does, I mean, it's relevant that the commercial's being built before the residential, but I'm not sure it's a determining factor for me, because that's still really close.
Yeah, I think that the separation there would be a, could be an item if this was CF, but with the commercial, we zoned it commercial highway and put additional restrictions on it, and then the residential was the PUD portion of the, the project. So in CH, the distance between the squat box and the residential is not part of the zoning ordinance or requirement inside of it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm not opposed to the use of the property, the site plan itself, maybe the layout is a concern for me, as well as the giant ice cream cone, no surprise to my fellow commissioners. I'm happy to talk more about after, I'm not there yet today, just for the record.
And so if you, so in order to get the, if you want to move the speaker box away from that, then you have to flip the site, and that puts the drive-through facing your public roads, which we normally try to avoid, especially in the gateway. I think we've turned away businesses because they could not get that to work the other direction. And I think, to Sean, Mr. Wright's point, I, I do think the timing matters a lot. You know, we talk about that on every project that we have mixed components, right, is who, who's coming here first? And, you know, what is their, what are their expectations? And if this thing, you know, if this is built, the expectations are different than if it, if, if the townhomes or the residential were there to begin with.
Just curious, the Panda Express, Jersey Mike's on Church Street, how far away is that squat box from the back of Indian Hills?
I have no idea.
You did, you did not design that site plan.
I did not, unfortunately.
I want to say that they asked for a variance of about, I think it's a 200 and...
That came in front of y'all, didn't it?
It's a 200-foot requirement.
200-foot requirement. I want to say they asked for about a 80 or 90-foot variance of that, I think.
Yeah.
Does that sound about right, Mr. Halliburton?
It does. But I don't know that we granted that distance.
I believe what, what they requested was what was granted.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, I'm happy to talk more, I just, I don't see a lot of opportunities to slide around without having other detrimental effects that we work extremely hard not to, not to have.
I think the idea that it's coming first is important, but for Ms. Everwater or anybody else, would a fence make it better for y'all? That's kind of both a sound deadener and is a block.
Yeah, but, oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's what I can't decide, is if I'm, if I'm the neighbor on the other side, do I want to be looking at the nice landscaping or do I want to be looking at the back of the fence?
Right.
You know, so maybe the, I, I don't know, maybe the fence isn't right on the edge, maybe it's on the inside edge and the landscaping's on the back.
Yeah, I think if...
Commissioner Wright, just to fill out.
Sure.
The BZAs determination on the, on the Panda Express, it was actually a combination of, it was a type D buffer, a fence, and a burn.
I was just...
That they, that they proposed, and I think, I think Mr. Blomley's right, I think they were asking for about a 50% reduction.
Yeah.
In the distance.
We just say a six-foot tall.
Just driving through that drive-through, I was just, distance-wise, how far was that off that back other property?
I think, I think we could, if you see the blue, we could do the fence in between the landscaping so you don't give up either or. We've got, it's a double row of evergreens, so we could work that between the landscaping there, be a six-foot tall, and we can bring the material back to you next month if you're okay with that.
So having a row of evergreens on each side of the fence, this fence going in the middle?
Yes.
That helps a lot. I think it helps the buffer.
Yeah. And we'll have 15-foot of landscaping on the residential side as well, at least, to meet the requirements of the GDO on that side as well.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the initial site with the fence, and then whatever amendments you make with respect to the landscaping on either side.
Second.
Subject to all staff comments.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob? Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
But Mr. Taylor, I, I want us to talk more about the ice cream cone, Mr. Blomley as well, please.
Yes, ma'am.
My eye here is not indicative of my eye next time, for the record.
We'll make sure to have additional information on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, our next item E is Clary Park Lot 9, In-N-Out. And this is an initial design review of a 3,885 square foot drive-through restaurant on two acres, Zoned CH and GDO 1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Robbie Corlou Lane. In-N-Out Burger is the developer. And Mr. Barbie?
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Jones and Murfreesboro Planning Commission. This next application before you is for In-N-Out Burger. I believe everyone is familiar with it. Location is part of Clary Park. They are showing, I think, one of the biggest concerns we've had in this area previously with similar-type restaurants has been stacking for the drive-through area and making sure that it is well-managed, especially during those first several weeks of opening. This plan is a little different than some that we've seen before. It's laid out very well, and they have planned for 31 stacking spaces for their drive-through lanes. In addition, in conversations with their team earlier today, they have got a very well-established opening day plan that they put into effect to manage traffic, to make sure that it stays on-site and doesn't kind of outgrow the property and cause any type of traffic issues. I'm available if you have any questions, and I believe Mr. Taylor has a presentation for you.
No, this, this isn't Mr. Taylor, Mr. Jeff Bryant with In-N-Out Burger.
I'm sorry, wrong side. But Representatives of Water Burger, design team and restaurant as well.
In-N-Out.
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 Jeff, did you bring any...
Start over again.
Did you bring any Double Doubles animal stuff?
We, we put you on the spot with, you know, just last couple of days coming up.
Oh, Mr. Wright.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Jeff Bryant, I'm a Development Manager for In-N-Out Burger. And let me just say, we are so excited to be here and have this opportunity to come be a member of the community here in Murfreesboro. We've spent about a year on our site design, our elevations. Initially, the first number of months were with Heinz to make sure we had something that worked out. In-N-Out is very selective about the locations and where we're at. We've never closed down a location in our 75-year history, so it's important for us that we are not just rushing into a site plan. We want to make sure there's a lot of thoughtful processes that go behind the scenes, make sure it's going to work out for us, not only today, but long-term, before working with staff. And staff's been great to work with in terms of going through the GDO, listening to some of our operational needs. We are a little bit unique in the, in the QSR market for what we ask for and some of the things that we do. So it's, we're very happy to finally, at the end of a year, be able to come forward in front of you to present this, this location, this opportunity for you. From a site design perspective, our site plan, we have a number of constraints with the access points along the east and the west sides, as well as the GDO has requirements for the window, the pickup and the pay windows for drive-through latens. So our whole building orientation and where and how we can sit on the site is limited, which is why we're, we're here in this particular location, but it also gives us the maximum length for our drive-through queue and stacking going across over there, as well as circulation and cross-connectivity everywhere else. A bit unusual for us, we have a full circulation for a bypass lane going around, which is also helpful in periods of high peak demand or otherwise. We can help mitigate any extra traffic by stacking in there. We deploy associates, we have delineators, we have handheld ordering devices to help facilitate that process and have streamlined flow of our customers coming through. flow of our customers coming through. We have met all of the parking requirements. To make sure that this site is functional for us, we have, again, the trash enclosure is going to be set back behind the front of the building, but still accessible for the waste services. So from a site design and overall perspective, this gives us a lot of flexibility for being able to handle a significant number of customers that we would expect, both from a parking and an overstacking perspective. As far as our site design, our elevations, in working with staff and looking at the GDO guidelines, again, we've spent a lot of time internally discussing and going back and forth, and we've come up with the elevations that you see in front of you. These are unique to this Murfreesboro location. There is no other In-N-Out in the system that has this type of brick, this percentage of brick. We've added in brick molyan details in front of the glass, the windows. We have a double soldier course, which will be an In-N-Out first for us that we're proposing at the top level. Over here, we've modified our cornices, so we have two different-sized cornices. They're a more modern look, and again, is something new for us. We've increased substantially the amount of brick that we would typically see, as well as going up the towers. So we have a lot of articulation in the elevations and across the building walls and the facades. You can see along over here that we have both the brick pop-out, we have the stucco up top, we have bands and articulation across going through there, as well as the block going, the masonry going all the way up the towers. These towers are functional components to us, so there is a parapet, which is a large part of this stuccoed portion you'd see here that offers screening for all of our equipment, all of our air conditioning and others. The towers themselves, we have different facilities, water heaters and IT rooms and other things that have those functional components up there. So overall, you know, this is very unique. It's a very special design and location. Happy to answer any questions on that side. We have our design team from our civil and our architectural side. One other thing that I wanted to touch on more specifically is a concern on traffic. Part of our whole site design is taking into account how we're going to get customers in and out quickly, efficiently, and effectively. And so we have a number of potential overstacking plans in an opening condition. We always work very closely with our neighbors and the property owners. Heinz has been very forthcoming in allowing us to discuss potential other empty areas and spots if they're necessary as it comes through. But one of the other ways that we're going to mitigate these things is that we're not going to open one standalone restaurant within Murfreesboro. We're going to be addressing multiple openings on the same day or the same weekend across the Nashville area, so that we can help disperse and spread out the demand that we would anticipate from all of our customers. So we have a lot of mitigation plans. We would work very closely with the city if we're able to move forward and we get towards an opening condition, working with traffic management and coming up with an overall opening traffic control plan. So I hope that addresses anything, but we're here and available to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, what questions do y'all have?
I'll make a comment. I've been to In-N-Outs all over the country, and this is the best-looking or fanciest In-N-Out I've ever seen. Yeah, thank you guys for working on this.
And one note on that, you know, In-N-Out, we are fortunate to be in our seventy-fifth year since our opening, and we are currently, our owner is Lindsay Snyder, so she is the granddaughter of the original founders. She is hands-on involved in every elevation and every design element and has personally gone ahead and approved. This is her vision for the city, so we're very proud to be able to put these forwards. I appreciate the recognition.
Any other comments or questions?
If there are none, I move for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate your presentation. Appreciate y'all being here. Make everybody hungry. Okay, we're moving on to Platts and Plans. First item there today is Big Blue Marble Academy. It's a site plan for a 12,311-square-foot daycare center on 1.4 acres, Zoned CH, located along Jack Burns Drive. German Development is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and Murfreesboro Planning Commission again. The next application before you is called Big Blue Marble. This is a childcare facility that is proposed to be located as part of the Victory Station Development. Lot 8, as you see here before you, has access both to the public street. Let me see if I can zoom in. Get a little better view of the plan. Jack Burns Drive, and will also have access to the private road to the west that's currently identified as Road B. With this being a private road, this is considered an interior lot for setbacks and for design, which means that it will only have a front setback along Jack Burns Drive. The site is generally in good order. Been working with Mr. Taylor and his team to develop this site plan. It has changed a little bit, I understand, since this cemental. There is an equipment mechanical room type that's on the rear of the building here that has since gone away, so it will not be included as a part of the design. Mr. Taylor is in attendance today. This is actually your project this time, so. As you see, the architectural diagrams here has its standard base body and cap, as we see on pretty much every commercial development. It's more of a residential design with gable ends and a pitched roof, so it should blend in fairly well with the area. Again, Mr. Taylor's available if you have any questions. I believe, do you have a presentation with this one? Not for this one. And I'm available if you have any questions as well.
Can I ask Mr. Barbie on that elevation there, are there, are those actually exterior doors?
They do look like doors.
Classrooms or what?
Yes, ma'am. I think by state code, all door, all classrooms on a daycare have to have a door to the outside.
And then is there like some type of fencing around those, or, I mean, does the building have some type of fencing between it and any parking lots, or?
Yes, ma'am. So there's loosely, there's fencing all the way around, so that if those kids are outside, we've got a safe spot for them.
Yeah, and they sneak out, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
And make sure they're caught in there. Okay. All right. What other questions, comments from the planning commission?
The Road B is a private road?
Yes, sir.
Who's responsible for that?
So that is, I think Mr. Swanson has actually broken ground on construction on that, and then all of the private roads in this development will be part of the Owners' Association. Maintenance will be taken care of through their dues.
Thank you.
All the roadways in that, in that development are private, and there are actually some like a backage road behind the existing lots that front on Franklin Road that are already, that are already in place and be the same maintenance mechanism for this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions?
Does this have a property address? Sorry for such a random question. This parcel?
Are you trying to locate it on?
Yeah.
So it doesn't have an address, but the developments that are, that have already been constructed do, and I can, in about fifteen seconds, get that for you. But don't time me.
Is that Dunkin' Donuts? That's all I need to know. Right here, I'm just trying to get my bearings.
See, it's, it's the development that's right at the southeast corner of Franklin Road and Veterans Parkway. So if you go to 5607 Franklin Road, it would be directly to the south of that.
Record shows twenty-six seconds.
What's that?
The record shows twenty-six seconds.
I think those were fast Mississippis, Mr. Prince. If the cable department could pull up my computer, I can show the location.
It's not that big of a deal. It's okay. You see that?
Ms. Ava Water?
Yes. Is that Overall, right here, on the left, down, right there? Is that Overall Creek Elementary?
This is Overall Creek Elementary.
Okay, I'm way off then. I see. Okay.
And that's Fellowship Bible Church right there.
That's it. Okay. That's what I thought it was. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley.
Yeah, that traffic right there can just be getting to Overall Creek. This Jack, which I never knew the name of it. I drive on it every day. Never knew the name of it. It can be really congested right there.
So we have, we've completed a traffic study for the overall development. I think we've updated it once, and the traffic study said that there's the possibility in the future that Jack Burns and Veterans Parkway needs to be signalized, and that there may need to be an additional right-turn lane on Jack Burns on the Veterans. Those are supposed to get analyzed when the big tract, is the master plan in here? If we've got a master plan, I'll show you the big tract. It's not. But to the north up here, there's about seven acres contiguous right there that we have kind of set aside for hopefully a big box that whenever that property is developed, that would be the main traffic generator from this development, that that signal warrant analysis will be completed at that time, and the warrant for the right-turn lane would get completed at that time as well.
Okay.
They did not think that it would be warrant, that would meet the thresholds until then, but we have, we have preserved the area or dimensional requirements at the intersection, so those opportunities don't go away.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
There's not opportunity to get there from veterans then, probably?
To get here from veterans. After the, so after the completion of this private road, there will actually be multiple ways to get in and out of here. We actually think it may help, because there's a Dunkin' Donuts in one of the centers that's open, there's an urgent care, and I think maybe there's a C store that's broken ground at the corner. It's been a minute since I drove through this stretch. With this completion, you'll actually be able to get to this location either straight from 96 or from Jack Burns or from Veterans, and then come back from the north to come down this private drive.
It may improve overall traffic flow?
I think it's got some opportunities to provide some relief valves, and I think this will be a natural location for anybody with an older child, say, older relative going to Overall Creek here to drop off their younger child here.
I'll make a motion we approve. Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ava Water?
Upstain.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Madam Chair, if I could, just make one announcement real quick before we move on to the next item. Mentioned about Ms. Green moving on to the IT department and the important role that she's going to play. It also would be remiss, and I wanted to mention this since he just finished his presentation, if I didn't mention that Mr. Brad Barbie has been promoted to principal planner. He has been a planner in our department since 2020, and he is going to be moving into the role that Ms. Green was in, being the primary contact for the GDO and the areas around the GDO, from Memorial Boulevard all the way to the west. And Mr. Barbie started with the city, how many years ago, Mr. Barbie?
Started in 2001.
2001. And worked for the Urban Environmental Department for a long, long time, and then in 2018, when the Urban Environmental Department was absorbed by the Street Department, he was the one position in the Urban Environmental Department because he did landscape plan review, landscape plan, or landscape inspections. He was absorbed into our department, and we were happy to have him in our department. And he served in that role for a couple of years, and then was promoted to planner in 2020, and now he's being promoted to principal planner. And so we're excited for him. We're excited for the new role that he is going to be serving in our department, and we wanted to publicly congratulate him for that and let you all know about that promotion as well.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wonderful. Big job. The GDO, we're so all proud of it, and know it'll continue to just do a wonderful job under you, so.
And for the record, I missed the Urban Environmental Department. That's where I got my start with the city as well. That was my first commission I served on.
Okay. So next, we are moving on to Item B. It is Parkway Place Lot 14, Oshkosh. It's a site plan for exterior improvements for a proposed electric vehicle assembly use at an existing 844,480-square-foot industrial building on 49.1 acres, Zoned PID. It's the Parkway Place PID Region 3, located at 2120 Logistics Way. Oshkosh Corporation is the developer. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You all may recall that this particular building has been under construction for a couple of years now. It's still not available on Google Maps yet, so we did go out into the field. So you can, if you have not driven by there, here is what you see on Richard Reeves Drive approaching the old Nyer Building, or what was affectionately known as the Nyer Building. Oshkosh is the new tenant that will be occupying the space of, I believe, the entirety of the building. And you'll notice here we have all of the dock doors along both Logistics Way as well as I-24, and then there is heavy landscaping along Logistics Way. And in this particular update, we're looking at some additional landscaping in some of these areas to, again, further shield some of those dock doors in these various areas. They are looking at fencing the entirety of the site, basically those portions closer up into the building. So per Tennessee state law, planning commission's required to look at that and approve that particular fencing plan. Staff has worked with them diligently to have a wrought iron-looking type fence along the Logistics Way section and black vinyl chain link along the backsides, and both of those would be located to where landscape is on the exterior, the fencing is on the interior, so it's not as visible along the site. The other thing that you'll notice is there are actually a laundry list of items that they're adding to the exterior of the building that was listed in the master plan, overall master plan for the site. So as you're looking at this section, there are five 150-ton HVAC units that are going to be going along those dock door areas that are facing Logistics Way, another five of them that will be on the backside of the building. So generally, this location, two, three, four, five, and along the back of the building. And then they're also looking at adding some trash compactors to the back of the building in this location, that we are looking at enclosures surrounding those, as well as trash dumpsters in this location and in the front area. Those three items will all have full enclosures to them. They're also looking at adding a storage building that's about in this location. It's currently shown as a metal building with just a roll-up door, kind of the size... It's currently shown as a metal building with just a roll-up door, kind of the size of a pod. Looking at our PID requirements, they would need to look more like what the enclosures are, which is more similar material to the building itself. Here you can kind of see that zoomed-in area of, as an example, one of the HVAC units that takes up about a 40-foot deep by about, yeah, pretty deep, by about 15-feet across section. And then their screening fence is what we're proposing there. Because it is up against the building, it's very difficult to get landscaping. You'd literally have landscaped Judd Islands along that whole frontage. So staff believes that it is reasonable to look at doing what we call a screen fence. Let me go to that detail. There we go. So here you'll notice that screen fence wall, obviously HVAC units have to have breathability. So this is the type of fencing that we're looking around all of those different exterior equipment areas, so that one, it stays clear of any of their maneuvering. And then here you can kind of see that HVAC detail sheet with the depth, and basically a enclosure fence, or excuse me, screening fence around the three sides of the building, or the HVAC unit. The other thing that you'll notice out in the back section is they do, and here's that storage building that we had talked about, that would need to be updated to incorporate the architecture of the building with the idea, it almost looks like it blends into the building. The things that we did not receive too much detail on, but there is a little bit here, is the dust collection unit, a Ellen two-tank vaporizer, which would be liquid nitrogen, if I recall correctly, as well as, so some of those features, I don't think they've defined yet, but I've seen things as tall as, like a very large cylinder with a, I almost call it tubing in the back, that would be somewhere about 20-feet in height. So staff has written the staff comment to really give some flexibility, because an eight-foot screening fence isn't going to do anything for a taller tower feature like that. But we know in our industrial areas, there are some of those uses that need those kinds of equipment that don't fit in the building and/or usually are not wanted inside the building because of the ventilation that is necessary for those items. So as I mentioned, with some upgrades to the storage building, the fencing also, they had asked for a kind of a curved-out fencing for this particular planned development. And staff looked at, you can see here in the top left, I don't believe we have any of those type of fencings within our planned industrial district, which this covers four different regions. So staff has suggested to go as a straight vertical fencing on this unless planning commission approved otherwise. My understanding is originally they wanted to put barbed wire on top of their fencing. Staff shared with them that that was not an acceptable material for the city. Prologis asked for a very similar thing. Prologis, the last one built, actually did a wrought iron type fence like this, but it was not curved out with basically the arrows pointing out towards the right-of-way. It was a straight vertical eight-foot fence with the tips. Not that anybody's going to impale themselves, but again, it was just trying to meet those PID requirements. So with that, the applicant has been excitedly improving things on the interior of the site. Last two things of note is, in addition to those other fenced landscape areas, they are going to be adding some landscaping along I-24. Currently, we have an area that, I think because there was a prior, here we are, interstate, there was a prior billboard at this location. That's probably why there was a very large gap in the buffering. That buffering with the PID required a 50-foot interstate buffer. So Brad Barbie's working with them to enhance that, so it has a similar buffer in the area that's missing, as you can see here on the drawing. And with that, if there's any questions, I believe Matt Taylor's here, if there's any questions on a civil side of things. And I'm not sure if the applicant here.
Okay. I did just want to mention a little bit more about the, about the user here. It's a corporate partner that we're really excited to come to Murfreesboro, that's Oshkosh McNeilus. They are a maker of electric garbage trucks, which is, to me, sounds like a really, really neat concept. And in this particular plant, they're going to be taking about 500,000 square feet of this building, and they are going to be assembling those electric garbage trucks. So they're going to be getting the parts in and assembling it here, and then selling it either for pickup or delivery to their end user. And so it's, you know, within the, they'll ramp up, they'll ramp up production within the first few years after they, after they complete it, but they've already got customers lined up. And so we're, we're really excited about, about Oshkosh McNeilus coming to Murfreesboro and being one of our corporate citizens here.
Thank you, Matthew. I didn't have all the background.
Okay. Any questions?
Motion for approval based on all staff.
One, a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments. And?
Second.
And a second. Ms. Jacob? Ms. Averwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. All right, our next item is Spring Street Townhomes. It's a site plan for 12 single-family residential attached townhomes within three buildings on 1.1 acres, zoned RM12 and CCO, located along North Spring Street. The Hensley Group is the developer. Ms. Smith?
Hello again. As you can see on the screen ahead is, this property is located just north of Bell Street and Spring Street. Both of these roadways are designated residential collector streets within our major transportation plan. A future land use map shows these areas as a mixed-form housing, and the existing zoning for the area is RM12. The RM12 district actually is not just on this site, but all four sides adjacent to this project are also zoned RM12, and have a little bit of a spattering of everything from single-family, duplex, triplex mixtures. You may recall that our mixed-form housing district really looks at buildings with no more than four units in them, and that they're closely resemble single-family houses. We recall from prior discussions with our planning commission, that's very difficult to obtain. And really, so what staff has worked closely with the applicant on is having it not look like apartments, basically. So the elevations that were included in your packet, there are some that are color elevations that show basically the interior of the site and the end caps, but do not reflect the front color elevation. Currently, the building on the top of your screen, that has been removed from the site already. And then the building to the bottom of the screen is the one, other residence that will be removed from the site. And I believe some of them have had multiple units within them. This particular zone district allows up to 12 units to the acre. This application only looks at 10.9 units to the acre, and it's a bulk zoning, so there is no special planned development with this particular project site. Yeah, access into the project site, you can see here on the screen, there's both an access from Bell Street as well as Spring Street, so that gives you a good circulation in and through the site. When we're looking at the parking, they're looking at three-bedroom units throughout and 12 units, which would require, per our CCO, 36 parking spaces. They're providing 41 of those. So of those 41, five of them are clearly like a guest parking type use within that area. As far as open space, there are two open space areas. As you can see, the vista here on Olive Street gets you to a formal open space area here at the center of the site. And then there is a secondary private formal open space to the top back section of the property, because there are more than eight units in this particular townhome development. In looking at where the HVAC locations are, they are looking at the HVAC locations, four of them being to the south of Building 2, four to the north side of Building 1, and four to the north side of Building 3. And then there is enough space within the garages to contain a roll cart within their garages to serve for their trash services. And then when looking at the overall open space for the project site, there is 33% of the site is actually a regular open space, and that formal open space actually adds up to 9% of that total number. You can see plantings are regular perimeter plantings around the site. There are no buffer requirements, because all of the adjacent properties are the same zone district, that RM12. And here's the two formal open space areas. So this one on the screen is that central section that, as you're coming down Olive Street, will be the vista that's created as you enter Spring Street, with bench seating, shading, and then your mail kiosk. And then the one at the bottom of the page is the one in the corner that includes kind of a grilling station in the back, tables with chairs, tables with fixed chairs on them, benches, and an artificial lawn area with some formal landscape around the exterior. And here's some of those fixtures within that site. And down to the elevation, so this is the only one that you don't have a color elevation, but staff assumes that that color palette that you'll see on the preceding, the other pages, would wrap into this section. So this would be looking from that Building 1, so this is the one closest to the north. They've incorporated this wrap porch feature that gives a little bit better detail on the end of the building, and wrapped this horizontal siding. And then on this portion, this faces towards that formal open space area. So the building that's adjacent to this is that same version, just flipped in a mirror. So if you imagine this building, flip it, you get this very harmonious two-building scape across the front. On the interior of the site, you have decorative garage doors with black light fixtures, very dark gray siding, or brick layers with some contrasting colors. And then I believe they're doing some wood staining on some of the posts for the building. So here you can see that interior site with the colorization added. And then here you can see those end caps. So the one in brick is what you'll see facing on the courtyard, so there'll be brick and brick in that central courtyard. And then the very exteriors of the site, you'll see the horizontal siding with, again, those wrap porches. So if you're standing at Bell Street, you'll see that wrap porch come around and on to Bell Street. And again, this is, it does have two and a half stories. Everything around is between one and one and a half stories, so we believe sizing-wise, that is appropriate to the neighborhood. And have included a handful of staff comments in your project book. And then here, just last but not least, they do have, you'll see here, three of the porches actually have a little bit more space that steps out from the building of about three feet. So these buildings will be set back at the 20-foot line along Spring Street, and then the porches will pop out three feet further forward, as allowed by our zoning code. And then on the opposite street, on Bell Street, these are based on averages within the CCO, it will be 21 feet from the current right-of-way of Bell Street, and there may be some minor right-of-way involved in Bell Street to meet today's standards. The book shows 60 feet of right-of-way on both streets. That is not the case. It's really closer to, I think, 40 feet. So we are asking that when they do a consolidated map for the two parcels, that they get those on the survey, so we know exactly what the right-of-way is in that section, and they'll work with our engineering department to make sure that that's taken care of. And then there will be sidewalks installed along Bell Street, which there currently are not. There were not any with the old building that was there that was previously removed. And this is not in any of our historic districts, so there's no special standards for any older fixtures. And I believe the applicants are here to add to anything that you may, questions that you may have on the project.
Hi, Taylor McMurtry, civil engineer with Catalyst Design Group. We've reviewed the comments and plan to continue to work with staff to address everything. There's nothing of great concern for us, but we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting.
Okay.
Can I just ask a general question? So with the mail kiosk, would you expect people are just going to walk up and get their mail? There's not really like a parking, there's parking across the street. It looks like you're guest parking, but I realize it's only, what, 12 units we're talking about?
Yeah, that would be the expectation, yes, ma'am, because of the small size of the site. It would be centrally located, so we think it would be easy to access from each building.
If nobody has any questions, I'll make a motion. We approve, subject to all staff comments.
I don't have questions, but I have concerns.
Okay.
I know that it technically is inside the density, but I worry about emergency services getting to the back row of houses. You know, I do, I appreciate the, the parking is decent. It's not my favorite, but it's decent. But I just don't see how Fire Department Emergency Services is going to finagle down that street, what you're calling a street, to get to that back row of houses. So if someone's having an emergency, and there's people lined up on the street, there's just no way. So, and that's typical me to be concerned about that, but Greg, Holly, you have anything to, or Matthew, sorry, anybody?
We do provide the plans to the Fire and Rescue Department and ask for their comments. They indicated no comments on this plan, so they did not, they did not indicate that any change in design was necessary in order to accommodate a fire truck.
But we do have a call into the Fire Marshal's Office to confirm that. And usually when they're reviewing their building plans, they usually start getting out the templates and making sure that, you know, the very specifics can be met, because I'm thinking usually the question might be a truck turn template. That it's able to make it through there, and usually it's, it's more about the radius when it makes the turn. Is, that's the, the portion of the building, so if you're looking at the northerly building, we'll just make sure that.
Yeah, it's that turn right there. I'm less worried about the straightaway coming from, whatchamacallit, but from Spring, from Bell Street, but from Spring Street. If the fire truck was trying to turn in, I don't see how they would clear that turn. Okay. And we've had a retirement since this was looked at by the Fire Marshal's Office, so.
It was looked at by the current Fire Marshal.
Is that right, Greg?
Yeah, I just spoke with Fire Marshal Lowe, and he said he didn't remember looking at it. So we're double-checking just to make sure in that interim that there wasn't anything overlooked. So we'll take a look at it and provide some information back. He did indicate that if the, they looked at, if there wasn't a fire hydrant in the area, that it was 22 feet. But if, if it did have a fire hydrant close, it was 26, 26 feet in width of the drive that they were looking at. So we'll get clarification on it.
Yeah, the width, I guess the turn is what I'm worried about.
Yeah, and the radius. We'll take, we'll take a look at it as well.
Okay.
But we do know that Bell is a substandard street currently, and as I mentioned, when we first set this particular plan in place, we were looking up at a maximum of seven feet of right-of-way dedication. So you may recall that past house was right on top of the right-of-way.
It was.
I don't even think it had a setback, so these buildings are going to be 21 feet back. So I would think that if there needs to be more of a... So I would think that if there needs to be more of a space to be able to make that turn into it, they're doing improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, along Bell. So they'll work very closely with engineering, but we'll circle back with Fire Department as well to make sure that that's not an issue.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And we have a motion.
Do you feel like that's something that can be addressed?
I mean, I won't tell the Fire Marshal how to do his job. If he truly signs off on this, then yes. I just, we've looked at other developments very similar to this within a stone throw away, and we had major concerns about the fire truck having access.
We'll be a part of that as well, and provide any truck-turning templates that are needed, and work closely with the Fire Marshal Office to make sure that we address those concerns.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure, just because this isn't a rezoning, I want to make sure we gave it the attention it deserves when it comes to the emergency services. Thank you.
We can make that a specific condition of approval. Then that way, we get it, document it.
That's fine, I trust you. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. Okay. And we had a motion. Would you like to...
I'm in my motion with the inclusion of making sure of the turning radius and this is, got this stamp of approval of the Fire Marshal.
Second motion.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Abstain.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next we are moving on to new business. Several items there this afternoon. First item is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of the entire right-of-way of Due North Drive, north of Sulfur Springs Road. James Pinson is the applicant. Ms. Smith.
So this item before you, you'll notice on the screen above in the Ortho map, Due North Drive spans along the entirety of two parcels, here and here, whereas the neighbor at this side is the one requesting the abandonment of that right-of-way because of this garage feature that was built. And currently, because it's a corner lot, does not meet our front yard setbacks, and we're trying to cure those items. So in looking at this particular one, we are sending out memos to all of the various departments. It does look like we do have some storm and some other utilities potentially in here, but we will bring back at the public hearing the specifics for further consideration. And today, we're asking that we set the public hearing for your March 6th public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Next item, Item B, is the annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 160 acres located at the end of Asbury Road. Granville Dismutes is the applicant. Ms. Smith.
So here you can see on the aerial, the location of the project. This is Asbury Road that ties back into Florence Road with I-24 on the easterly boundary. As was submitted with their petition, this shows our land use map for that particular area with our urban growth boundary stopping at the highway. And you'll notice there's both general commercial and suburban residential districts underneath. This particular application is not currently submitting a concurrent zone change. They're only submitting for their annexation at this time. And so again, we would like to set that public hearing for our March 6th evening meeting to discuss and provide your plan of services and recommendation to the council at that time after holding a public hearing.
And I will add that we do expect to see a zoning request on this property in the near future, but the property owners wanted to, property owners and their potential buyers wanted to go ahead and, and request annexation out in front of the zoning request.
Okay. Any questions?
I don't know. I'll make a motion. We set a public hearing for March the 6th.
But we'll see the plan of services on March the 6th?
Correct.
Before March 6th?
In the agenda that will go out the week before.
Okay, thank you. Second, if no one did that.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 0.47 acres located at 3416 South Church Street. Wesley H. Allen and Tanya C. Allen are the applicants. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the, oh, thank you, they read my mind. I'll be presenting this for Ms. Green. We have an annexation and a companion zoning request for 0.47 acres located on the west side of South Church Street, directly across the street from the marketplace at Savannah Ridge Development where the new Aldi was constructed. Directly to the north of the subject property, about a year and a half ago, you saw a, an annexation and a zoning request for that parcel that's at the corner of Highfield Drive and South Church Street. The zoning was for a two-unit commercial building with an urgent care clinic. That, that building is currently under construction. At that time, the developers of that lot wanted to try to incorporate both that lot and, and this lot, but were unable to come to terms with the owner. And so there's a new applicant for this lot, but the request is very, very similar. Another two-unit commercial building. The future land use map for the, and I'll go ahead and present both the annexation and the, and the zoning of this, of this item. The future land use map that was adopted last year does show this property to be located within the city's service infill area. It identifies it as neighborhood commercial. The uses that are proposed within this two-unit strip center are, comply with the recommendations of the plan with regards to the uses in the neighborhood commercial land use character area. There would be access to the property to the north, so there would be that connectivity back to the intersection of Highfield Drive, although that intersection with Highfield Drive is not a signalized intersection. I think we do anticipate additional requests in the future for the property to the south. Don't know when that will happen, but I know those properties to the south have been purchased by an investor, and so it wouldn't surprise us if we see those come before you with similar requests in the future. To the west of the subject property is an existing county single-family residential subdivision, and Mr. McGuire will come up in just a moment and give a brief presentation, including how he proposes to, to buffer those, those existing homes to the west. So we have both a request for annexation and a request for the zoning of the property to PCD simultaneous with annexation. We would recommend that both of these be scheduled for March the 6th, and we'll need two separate motions. But I'd like to invite Mr. Clyde Roundtree and Mr. Chris McGuire to come to the podium and just give you a little bit of additional information about the proposed site design and uses.
Thank you, Matthew, if I can find it. See. Sorry, Holly.
And while they're, while they're pulling that up, I will mention that we did have a neighborhood meeting on this proposed development last month. Probably about seven or eight people attended, and we didn't hear any major objections during that meeting. There was some good dialogue with some of the neighbors.
Let's see if I can find a little bit of a larger one. Can y'all have it on your screen?
We do now.
I'm sorry. Clyde Roundtree, Hudson Steel Engineering. I worked on the plan and design. Chris McGuire, one of our civil engineers, and Hudson Steel as well. I wanted to show you this one in particular because Matthew referred to the property to the north. We're actually using the same architect.
Here we go.
Yeah, that, that really shows you the adjacent relationship. That makes more sense out of the design. The same architect's working on both buildings, so as Matthew mentioned, the property to the north is under construction, so we have a very similar architectural character as that building. We had to cooperate SEC to the plan to the north, so we had to make sure that we had, you know, good exposure as far as cross-access to our property from the adjacent street to the north as well. We are working with the state as far as our access point along South Church. We'd like to move that down, potentially to have closer shared access to the property to the south, as Matthew mentioned. That particular property owner was at our neighborhood meeting, the fellow to the south, and he actually owns quite a few properties all the way down to the next road. So one of our exceptions we're asking for in our site design is that typically there'd be a buffer along that southern property line that would separate us from the residential, but we're leaving two cross-access openings on the driveways to allow for us to, we can just go ahead and continue it on. And then we're in cooperation over the cross-access easement with the property to the north, that they can use our access point on the South Church, and we can get onto that side street as well. With that in mind, if you have any questions, it's a fairly straightforward plan, as Matthew mentioned. We're excited about it. The owner's been very flexible. We only meet our parking requirements. We did ask for an exception on where our dumpster is located. We're a little close to the property line than would be typical, but based on the situation that we're up against another dumpster, we felt like that was appropriate. We're also asking for a reduction in the side setback of two feet, but that's kind of a, kind of a shared yard between the two buildings as well. In lieu of having a formal open space, which we weren't required on this one, we have a, a really nice patio area and enhanced landscaping, but those are the four things we've asked for in regards to exceptions. As far as the building's concerned, just let you know, very nice articulation. As I think I mentioned before, a lot of the buildings are taking more of a gateway standard with the undulating roof lines, the variated fronts, the, you know, definitive base, the percentage of glass, so our architect's very in tune with that, so we're consistent. The only thing that came up in our site review, our plan review for the pattern book, is that this elevation is important because the glass that's shown on that facade basically in front of you, that's between the buildings, that's now a mansored window. It's opaque glass. It's not really true glass. And that's from a fire protection standpoint, so that was the biggest change architecturally. And with that in mind, if you have any questions, we are, we're here for you.
Clyde, could you also go over the, the screening that you're proposing along the western property line?
Well, yep, so I was going to scroll down to that, Matthew, as far as our landscape plan. So right now, the property to the north has proposed a solid, a solid privacy fence as well as landscaping. We're matching the buffer that they are, they've committed to, so we'll pull that down to the south. But as Matthew mentioned, we are providing a fence, a solid fence, and that's primarily to stop any kind of strobe effect on the residents to the south. But that'll be a solid fence. We do project where the landscape item will be, so we'll landscape just with some shade trees there in between the two cross-access driveways. But it'll look a little curious because you're going to have these basically stub parking aisles into a fence. The adjacent property owner was fine with that. He's just glad we have some separation from the commercial development to the residential development. But with that in mind, we feel like we're amply protecting the adjacent neighbor. He is, again, he showed up to our neighborhood meeting. He's interested in moving forward in the future. He knows it's going to go commercial, so he's, he's excited about it. But we did want to make sure we had some separation visually from his property. The house is actually set back a little bit, so it's not really a direct, it's a pretty deep lot, so there's some, he's fine. I just want you to know that. And that's really it. Is there anything, Chris, you want to add to that?
Maybe slightly.
Sure.
Another reason why we're proposing the two connections to the south is, as we do see the property to the south being developed, the hopes is that the person who owns the property, property directly to the south actually owns a portion to the next street down. So instead of everyone just having access on I, Highfield, they'd also have access to the street farther to the south. So there's potential that someone on that southern connection, which I believe is where Liquor World is, would actually be able to drive from that subdivision potentially all the way up to the property to our north without ever having to get on the highway. So it would just provide a, a good traffic opportunity. And like Clyde had said, I spoke personally, and he also showed up to the meeting with the southern neighbor about the buffer on the south. And I, I offered additional landscaping. He said, really, there's no point. If you could provide a solid buffer for the time being and agree that we'll share access in the future, then he was happy with just a fence.
All right, sounds like y'all did your homework. I'm going to make a motion. We set this for a public hearing on March the 6th with respects to the annexation petition.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay, and just for the record, we'll read in Item D, which is the zoning application for approximately 0.47 acres located at 3416 South Church Street, to be zoned to PCD at 3416 South Church Street, PCD simultaneous with annexation. Greg Patel is the applicant. We've heard the presentation on this. And any other questions or comments before we set a public hearing?
Move to set the public hearing for March the 6th.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay, thank y'all. Our next item, like our last item in new business. This is a zoning application for approximately 2.2 acres located along West Thompson Lane to be rezoned from RS15 to PRD, the King's Landing Annex PRD. Black Diamond Development is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is property located along West Thompson Lane that's surrounded on the northeast and west by the King's Landing Development, which is, which is under development right now. They've been working on the infrastructure, roads and utilities and drainage for quite some time, as they're moving forward with that. This property being surrounded by that PRD, it was always anticipated that it would be, and extended this PRD, if you will. It's in the city and it's currently zoned RS15, but the owner of that, of the house that's on the property was not ready to sell at the time that the PRD came through a couple of years ago. Since that time, she was ready to sell, and I believe that Mr. Freedsum and Mr., and his partners have already purchased the property and have made a request to rezone it to PRD and to differentiate it from the existing King's Landing PRD. They're calling this King's Landing Annex, although it's basically just another part of the King's Landing subdivision. It adds both single-family detached homes that are identical to the ones that were approved in several years ago on the, on the north-south street that's, that's on the east side of this development, and townhomes on the north-south street that's on the west side of this development. So before Mr. Roundtree and Mr. McGuire come back up, so you'll see the, this is the layout of what was approved back in 2021 or 2022. And you'll see that it's single-family detached homes on individual lots of record on the east side of the development and along the northern property line, and townhomes along the, the western side of the development. So basically going to be mirroring the exact same type of development that has already been approved for the remainder of the, of the development. The surrounding land uses, as I mentioned, it's bordered on three sides by, by this development, but further to the east is the North Borough Court subdivision, and to the north is an undeveloped tract, and further to the west is the Cherry Blossom Downs development that Mr. Brian Burns is, is currently developing. Directly across the street is the North Side Baptist Church property. So I'd like to invite Mr. Roundtree and Mr. McGuire once again to give a brief presentation about this proposed rezoning request.
Let's, I guess, scroll down to it.
And while they're doing that, I'll mention that we do recommend that you schedule a public hearing for March 6th.
While they're pulling this up, this was all talked about when we passed this in 2020 or 2021, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think, I think... Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's always been anticipated to be a part of this development. It was just a matter of, of when.
Yeah, so I thought.
It's the same developer?
Same developer, yes.
Thank you, Matthew. Clyde Roundtree and Hudson Steel Engineering. And Mr. Wright, that's correct. Staff had us from the get-go kind of anticipate these future townhomes and single-family residences. As was mentioned, Mr. Freedsum, they waited for the owner. At the time, when he purchased the property, the owner had a special needs daughter that she wanted to relocate her. So she has passed away, I believe, since this whole project started. So the mother was more flexible to move after that. And it's kind of nice timing-wise because they're really, as Matthew mentioned, they're just starting construction so she can, they, I believe they purchased another home for her in another location. So it's about 2.2 acres of land. That will basically be the same pattern of development as we proposed originally. The Phase 1 component, it does distinguish that in the pattern book, just so you can know. And that's still consistent, that they're doing the single-family detached first. Let me see if I've got it here. Yeah, that kind of gives you a little bit more. So Phase 1 are the single-family homes that are closest to North Borough Neighborhood. It would be noteworthy that the detention area, our, Hudson Steels work with SEC and Brian on linking all the detention areas together. We're kind of on the downhill side of the development that Brian's doing. So the ponds have changed a little bit from the original proposal, not the location, but the size. So that's been adjusted for, and Mr. Burns and Mr. Freedsum are working together on that jointly. And all the other amenities that were proposed in the original pattern book are consistent with this development. The open space requirements, playground area, all been kind of scaled and sized with this in mind. So it was really, we knew it was coming. We just wanted to make sure that we had planned for it early. And that's really a credit to the planning staff to make sure that we didn't just get this one sprung on us. And that's really it. That's the extent of it. It's, it's not a big change, but it is kind of a completion of a project that was proposed several years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Any questions about this proposal?
I don't know. I'll make a motion, set a public hearing for March the 6th.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Thank you.
Ms. Ava Water.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay.
It's a different order.
Well, that concludes our new business. Our next item is staff reports and other business.
I have none. I think Mr. Hankins probably has three or four items, though.
Uh, he's, he, no, he doesn't.
I'll save those for prime time.